To one MRSA, section four oh three B two D and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules or Procedure as amended and adopted, May third, 2022. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight one eight zero two four six zero four zero five and password zero nine zero six eight nine, or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. This is a work session of the Sanford City Council and not a business meeting of the city council. Meeting is open to the public, but is not a public hearing. The chairperson shall conduct the work session with the committee members and will elect a call upon the public in attendance for either questions or to obtain input and information. All work products will be developed by consensus and forwarded as advisory to the full council for any matter warranting legislative action by the city council at a business meeting so posted and assembled. Twenty-two dash four nine eight dash zero one, City Council Roads Workshop. Welcome, and everybody, I hope that there are a lot of people watching at home, but this meeting will be recorded, so we'll be able to use it as a resource. And the deputy mayor is here just on time. Nope, that's okay, you're all set. Councilor Brink is not feeling well this evening, and so she is taking the night off, but she will also be probably catching up with what happens at this meeting. So I'm going to turn this over to Department Public Works Director Matt Hill to start us off. There'll be a point at which, once we get through some information, that we'll be welcoming anybody that's here to come up and talk and tell us, you know, if your road needs work and ask any questions that aren't answered by the presentation. So floor is yours, Matt.
Thank you very much, members of the council, public. My name's Matt Hill.
Can I just ask people to turn off their phones, please, and counselors, like, maybe put them away so that we can really concentrate on what's going on? Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. My name's Matt Hill. I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Sanford, Maine. Been here eight years, and I've really enjoyed a great opportunity here in Sanford. Tonight, we're going to be talking about roadway infrastructure in Sanford. Touch a little bit on the history right now. We'll go to where are we now, where do we want to go, and how do we get there? So, we last met with the council, geez, it had to be three or four years ago now, about what are we going to do with the roads, how are we going to make progress and get the city in better shape? There's a long history up to then, including urban renewal and a bunch of other initiatives, but we'd also been very dependent on the main department of transportation to come in and do projects according to their three-year work plan, but there was not a lot of coordination in between. So the where are we now, that coordination is starting to be realized a little bit more, a lot more, in fact, and where we want to go is try to leverage the city's investments and funding in our infrastructure with other agencies' opportunities and grant funding and public-private partnerships, and try to take the local dollars we have here and try to get them matched as much as possible. So, and then how do we get there? And you can see there's little hands in the middle sign for that one. Spoiler alert, it's through partnerships. So, this is a quick diagram of the city of Sanford. It represents 184 miles of road. The black is a city-accepted street. The black with the gray outline is a, has state ownership, but much of this is within what's called the urban compact for Sanford. So even though the state has ownership, but the city, the city has maintenance rights, maintenance responsibilities on it. And then there's a very small amount of, like, private roads that you see in various colors here. So, when we were working, first working on this, the big plan back in 2016, we went out and did a pavement conditions index that was approved by the city council and executed by a consultant called the Beta Group out of Massachusetts. They came to Sanford and did a pavement conditions index survey where they went out and looked at the condition of each road and gave each segment of road a numerical score between one and a hundred, zero being the worst and a hundred being the best. Based on that, they also provided recommended repairs for each segment of road. So, on the chart here, and I would encourage you, if you're watching at home, to maybe replay this at some other time and maybe you can zoom in a little bit. But the blues are defer maintenances and do nothings. The routine maintenance is the light blue, which is such as a crack seal. Preventive maintenance is in the green, which is like a light capital overlay, something on the order of about three-quarter, three-quarters of an inch thick. The rehabilitation is a more serious overlay, you know, up to inch and a half or two-inch-thick overlay. Reclamation is the process of grinding up a road and putting it back in place. And then the full reconstruction you can think of is just tearing everything out, including up to eighteen inches below the roadway structure, and replacing that and starting fresh.
Matt, can I just ask a question about this map?
Yes.
Is this a map that would be available on our website somewhere so that we could take time and really look at it closely, not just as part of a meeting?
Yeah, we can absolutely.
Because to me, that's something that would be really valuable.
Yeah, and each of those roadway segments has the, I can try to zoom in here, too. I have a limitation of the, that's as close as it gets right now, but I've got this in a PDF format, and you can see it much clearer. So...
So, Matt, later on, if residents have a question about their particular road, we, you will grab the PDF and we'll zoom in on their particular road and take a look.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. One other caveat about this information is that this is surveyed in 2016, so already, you know, it's on the order of about six years old. And as I'm going to talk about in a minute, that can, even though six years can have a drastic effect on the condition of the road. So what you see out here might not be reflected of what the current condition is, and maybe hopefully we've, you know, rebuilt some of these already so that, you know, they're in much better shape than what's shown on the diagram. Speaking of that conditions diagram, this is from the Federal Highway Administration and represents the lifespan of a road. So along the horizontal bottom, the X-axis is time and years, and along the Y-axis, the vertical is the condition of the road. So you can see at the, when a road is freshly done, it's in excellent shape at a hundred percent of its, it's in its best condition. And as the road ages and goes through time, that condition starts to degrade. Those natural things that happen, including water infiltration into pavement, you know, no matter how dense you have for pavement, it is porous. Even concrete is porous. So over time, that pavement starts to age, cracks start to develop, and right around like the seven or eight-year mark, if you spend some money there and crack seal the road, you help seal it up and keep the water from penetrating into the base, and that stops the exacerbation of the freeze-thaw cycle and generally keeps your road in better shape for longer times. So you can see that that investment rate at the top, even though it might have to happen several times, is your best and highest value. As that road starts to reach kind of the inflection point of the curve on the graph, see where it starts to go vertical there? I'm not sure if, yeah, see my mouse there, there's my mouse. As that curve starts to go vertical, that inflection point represents a significant degradation of the road, where your cracks have opened up, your water is rapidly infiltrating into the base, and your freeze-thaw cycle is starting to take hold. And that represents a rapid decline of the condition of the road. So it's very important to try to get to the road when it's in this condition, and once it's down at the bottom of the curve here, for every one dollar that you would spend in the crack seal effort, you're spending six to 10 times as much on the reconstruction down here. And as we will discuss a little bit going forward here, you know, market conditions affect that as well. So that, even though the crack seal is a better investment, the reconstruction is very flashy. So, one of the, one of the things that we did when we were proposing to do a lot of this work on the roads is try to get the council and the planning board to understand that investing in the roads is not really a linear path. There might be times, you know, when you're living on a street that's in really terrible shape, and you see your neighbor's street getting a crack seal and your street's not getting anything, you're scratching your head and wondering why my street's not getting any work when it's in terrible shape when the other street next door is getting, is getting a treatment. So, those can be very politically, like, charged issues, and we were trying to prepare everyone for that. The capital investment, the full reconstruction, that's very expensive, and we figured out, I think there was like a twenty-four and a half million-dollar backlog when we did that study in 2016, so we had a ways to go. So...
Matt?
Yes.
If I could, before you, could you go back to that chart for just a moment?
Of course.
I think the, one of the most important points about the part of this chart is, starting back in 2018, before the bond even went out, was the recognition on this particular chart that we wanted to get the pavement condition index up to eighty-five percent. By keeping the pavement condition index at eighty-five percent or higher, which takes a significant investment when the majority of the city's roads were below that, because we averaged sixty-nine percent when that study was done in 2016, by getting us to that eighty-five percent or higher, the city can transfer what would have been maintenance, reconstructive costs towards the maintenance and keep the road bases there for far less money than what we can for the phase that we're in currently. So, I think that's a very significant point that I didn't want to have understated in the presentation.
That's a very good point. So here, from the study back in 2017, are the, some of the prices that they include in their cost per square yard, which is even for me, who does this every day, dollars per square yard is kind of a funny thought about how you price things. But that happened to be how they, they priced it in here. In the past, I've used such things as dollars per mile, which, but this, this, this addresses, you know, variable width roads, you can get cost per square yard. So, in comparison, here's the, those are the 2017 prices. So then here is a sheet I obtained from Maine DOT from September thirtieth of 2021, reflecting some of the prices that they'd observed based on their bids. So they saw between twenty-five and a hundred percent price escalation compared to that 2017 sheet, when considering all forms and construction of maintenance locally. So that reconstruction dollar, when you compare that apples to apples, was roughly the same, actually. The rehab, the mill and fill that we talked about a few moments ago, on average, that had gone from twelve dollars a square yard to thirty dollars a square yard. So, about two and a half times in that case. And then the crack seal had also escalated from fifty cents a square yard to seventy-four cents a square yard. So, those two sheets, they present the data in different ways, so we tried to draw some, you know, apples-to-apples comparisons here. And, you know, overall, there has been a price escalation since the study was first done, and I think that's one of the reasons why it's very important to redo the study and take a new look at where we stand, mark the progress that we've made, but then also create a better plan for the future with more accurate information.
So you don't do a price per mile anymore? Do you know, I mean, because that's how I used to always remember it being discussed.
Yeah.
So that really is like out the window when you're doing this? Or do you have that? I mean, because that, that price per mile has to have really escalated.
Yeah, yes. So basically, what I was doing in these, these two sheets was comparison. I needed to get something apples to, you know, the same, comparing square yard to square yard or mile to mile. So in this case, I chose square yard to square yard. But, uh, but yeah, talking to Maine DOT, that million dollars a mile that we talked about back in, you know, 2015, 2016 is now for full roadway reconstruction, urban environment is three to eight million dollars a mile that Maine DOT is seeing. And I put a big asterisk on that, too. Maine DOT has a lot of standards, a lot of quality control, and that helps the state get the best value for their dollar in that they can hold contractors accountable when there's problems. And they're very strict about it, and rightly so. The city of Sanford kind of walks a little bit finer line. We try to do things to state standards, but we don't come in with the same teeth in our contracts. One, we don't have the same level of oversight. We generally don't write all the specs the same way. So, we're generally counting more on a local level for the contractors to step up to the plate when there's a problem, and we sit down at the table and figure it out to a mutual agreement. That's usually not in writing, but it's something where the contractors are usually interested in keeping their local, you know, the business local, and they want to do the best by the city. And so we work with them, you know, on a case-by-case basis to make everything right when there's, when things happen.
I'm sorry, Matt, did you say three to eight million dollars for full reclamation per mile? Okay.
Full reconstruction, yep. Yeah, that's what Maine DOT is seeing right now. All right, so then this, this diagram was also developed back in 2017, and this is what I call the money diagram. So this is a graph on the X-axis is time. So you can see February of 2017, and it goes all the way out to 2022, far in the future, 2022. And on the left, on the Y-axis, is the roadway condition rating. So we were just above a sixty-nine back in 2017, sixty-nine point two-one. And this program that Beta provided, and we're going with again, is dynamic. So you can basically set your parameters along the bottom. So we had, at the time, we had funded crack seal at ten percent, preventive maintenance at twenty percent, rehabilitation at forty percent, and reconstruction at thirty percent of our funding. And based on those funding levels and what we had for inventory, which needed the respective treatments, this diagram was created. So at the time, we were funding at about one point two million dollars a year. And you can see by the blue line with the squares on it, that the realization at that time was that we would continue to have the roads get worse. So that was, you know, major realization. And then with the guidance of the council and the city manager, we came up with a goal, basically, of how, like Steve said, we wanted to get to an eighty or eighty-five, and we wanted to do that, and we figured we wanted about, to do about half a point a year. So we extrapolated that, used this graph and the system, and came up with, we needed a funding of four million dollars a year in order to start gaining at the rate we wanted to.
At the dollars at that point?
Yes, with twenty seventeen dollars, right, so...
Make sure everybody's paying attention, at that point.
Yeah, so, and we just talked about price escalation, so you can probably guess where that's going. At any rate, we are going to have this pavement conditions index redone by the same group that did it before, so we should get very, I wouldn't say similar results, but I would say it's going to be comparable results, where we can kind of take the analysis of where we were and the analysis of where we are, and put those two side by side and see the progress we've made, and also help chart the progress we're planning to make. So, with, with the Sanford Roadway CIP, as Steve mentioned, we were looking for an average PCI score of eighty to eighty-five. We planned in 2017 to ramp by half a million a year to the target of four million dollars a year, so we're, we remain on target for that. We're funding at two point two, two point five million this year. We also had the 2019 voter-approved bond for six point two million dollars. You know, it's always very difficult to invest, and, and looking at things and prices, it's sometimes easy to say, like, this is the worst year to do it, because prices are just changing and, you know, things are unpredictable. I don't, personally, don't think 2019 could have been a better year to approve that bond, because we ended up having the pandemic. We had, you know, less traffic on the roads, and prices actually kind of bottomed out. So, we did, we did all that six point two million and more in 2020, and got a fair number of the peripheral roads in Sanford and Springville done that really needed it badly. So, also on this diagram, we need to reevaluate, check our progress and expectations through performing the study again. So, in the meantime, other things have come up, and, and with that commitment that the city of Sanford made to the roads, we've been able to take that money and not just straight-up sink it into pavement. We've been able to go out and find willing partners with the main department of transportation through some of the programs such as the MPI, which is Municipal Partnership Initiative, the PPI, which is the Planning Partnership Initiative, and we yet have one of these in Sanford, but we're on the lookout all the time for a BPI, which is a Business Partnership Initiative. Basically, it splits the cost of an infrastructure improvement three ways, between the state, the city, and the business. We've had local utility partnership opportunities, notably the Sanford Water District and the Sanford Sewage District have been great partners when they have a main or, or something that they need to replace and they have a major impact on the road. Sometimes we've been able to partner together and complete an overlay on the road once they're done, so they, they end up with a better product, and then we save a little bit more money when we redo the road. We've had a handful of public-private partnerships, mostly small in nature. And then upcoming, we have this SS4A grant opportunity, which is Safe Streets for All, which is a federal program aimed at reducing fatalities and accidents, which is comprised of two components. The first is an action plan, where we will study the required areas or the high-crash locations within Sanford, propose a program in order to address those areas. And then the second half, once that plan has been ratified by the council and supported locally, that will open up a funding opportunity of up to a billion dollars a year that we can, will have to compete for, but try to address those opportunities that we've identified, those safety issues that we've identified. We already have a couple low-hanging fruit items that we've been studying, and we have forwarded those studies to Maine DOT. And then also, and I, I'm going to keep on going back on the maintenance side of things, because it was the top of the roadway conditions graph earlier. Within the department, when I started here eight years ago, we had one foot very strongly in the construction world and one foot very strongly in the operations and maintenance world. As the economy has changed and our department has changed, we are now headed towards, we are maintenance. We want to be maintaining those roads and try to do more of that very, very critical preventive maintenance, so that the roads that we have that are good do not start going down that steep curve. And that's been a difficult decision to arrive at. We've had a lot of people through the department who like to do construction, but this is just really the fact of the matter, is that we now have some of that funding available for the construction, we're able to advertise that, get it out. The department still continues to support some of those contractors on a case-by-case basis, but we need to turn much stronger towards the maintenance side of things. So, with that, and I know it's been spoken about quite a lot at the council level, we've had, I've been continuously maintaining the five-year roadway CIP plan. I guess I won't kind of describe it much more here, I'll just kind of open up what I've got.
Matt, before you do, are you able to go back to that last slide that you just had?
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry.
Go and buy it one. Yes, right there, please. So I wanted, I wanted to note on here that, you know, property tax burden in a city such as Sanford is high. It always has been, it always will continue to be. This slide shouldn't be understated. It's, it really started with, you know, when Matt first started here, and I have a strong premise that I want the city to be recognized as one of the best public-public and/or public-private partnership, partnership entities out there. Matt had a strong working relationship with the main department of transportation. He continued to foster that in working here. Started with municipal partnership initiatives on various roads, such as what Mount Hope and, and others, where MPI is whereby the main department of transportation will pay fifty percent of those costs up to a point, which I think is six hundred thousand dollar cap now, that's the current cap. Yep. So, by working in coordination and in conjunction with the main department of transportation, we were saving property tax dollars and getting those two-to-one relationships. The next piece in there, the Planning Partnership Initiative, was a tremendous undertaking that Matt took on and coordinated with all of our departments to put together that Planning Partnership Initiative, which resulted in a book that was about eight inches thick. I can remember Mayor Cody at the time, and we slid that in front of him, and, "What do you think?" And he's like, "Really? Oh, this is good stuff. This is good stuff." So, in there was all of the planning documents, all of the work that was being done. It represented the city council had already stepped to the plate and was, was getting ready to make the investments that were necessary and such. All of that was expressed in that master document, which really became the foundation for what was created, the VPI, the Village Partnership Initiative, with now Commissioner Bruce Van Note at the main department of transportation, that led to the MDOT funding a hundred thousand dollars to write, to assist us to write the grant for the RACE Grant, that resulted in twenty-five million dollars of federal funds. So there's no understating that, that that was a lot of work to get that level of recognition, to gleam twenty-five million dollars worth of funds to come in here to get significant road improvements in the heart of our downtown, that absent that work, would have had to have come at some point from local property tax dollars. I just didn't want to let that slide by, because Matt's done a tremendous amount of work in this area. So, thank you.
Thank you. I actually went all around the perimeter here, but I forgot to talk about the RACE Grant, which was right in the middle. Yes, so, and, thank you. Let's see here. All right, so, actually, let me go back to that for a second. So for, for the RACE Grant itself, we had basically worked up two five-year scenarios, one if we got the RACE Grant and one if we didn't. Those two were noticeably different, not really in twenty-three, or twenty-two or twenty-three, because we basically had those years planned out. But there was a noticeable difference in twenty-four and twenty-five. Those years were, were budgeted for projects that had been previously funded in partnership with Maine DOT through state municipal agreements, that I didn't really touch on here either. But we had, you know, a fair number of them, and they actually became the components of the RACE Grant. So we had planned to do this work actually much earlier, starting in 2024, but because we got the RACE Grant and we rolled everything into one, Maine DOT felt very strongly that in order to advertise as one project, we should wait until 2026. And you'll see some of the milestones in here and start to really appreciate, you know, why they think there's a significant delay there, because there's a boatload of work to be done.
So, just because the RACE Grant, all that encompasses is not going to start till 2026, it doesn't mean we're not going to do roads?
Right.
Okay, so that's really kind of what we're talking about tonight, right?
Yes, yes. So the, the funding that we've been programming to get up to four million a year was going to be used as matching money for some of those roads, but now that the RACE Grants come in, both Maine DOT and the city kind of get to pull their money out of both those agreements. We're going to come to an umbrella agreement with the state of Maine for the RACE Grant, but it's going to be using eighty percent for all federal funding, and then a split between the city and the state for the remainder, depending on the bid price.
And what you'll see in this, the five-year presentation here, you don't see it in the first slide or the second slide, years, years one and two, but starting in years three and four, you see a long list of city streets that we would not have gotten to absent the RACE Grant.
So, let me, let me add one more caveat on this. These projects change, and I want to be able to say, like, "Oh, we've got your project on the schedule for next year, it's a sure thing." There's always things changing. In fact, we got on a job site just this week and found some, you know, you never know what you're going to find until, until you put a shovel in the ground, and that's especially true around here. Sanford has a lot of history, a lot of archaeology, and you'd be very surprised how quickly you find a showstopper. So, we try as best we can to mitigate risk. We try to go in and do some advance. We were just talking about the intersection of River and Cottage Street just a few minutes ago on why we were in there, and it was to mitigate risk, so that Maine DOT, when they come through with the RACE Grant, doesn't have to worry about, you know, what surprises they're going to find on that corner. So, being good partners, we wanted to take care of that mystery for them, and they're going to find a clean degravel when they go through there.
Matt, can you close out the toolbar on the right-hand side, just hit the arrow and close that out? No, down below. No, on the side.
Where is it?
Nope.
Oh, yeah.
Crash this right here.
Ah, okay.
Just click that.
Yep.
And then increase your size, just.
Yep.
Hey.
Oh, yes. How's that? All right. So...
You should actually pull it by.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
So the color code means something?
Uh, well, generally, no.
Okay.
It is grouping, it's grouping kind of streets together. There's usually an economy of scale, if you're going to reconstruct a street, where, you know, you could get a contractor into reconstruct a street, but you might get a bigger fish if you kind of put some of those streets together into a larger project. Westside Village is a very good example of that. You know, we, we had five streets down there that were all individually a problem, but once you put them all under one, one roof and one project, you can get a larger contractor in who's got generally more resources and ability to do the job. So, here, here are the River Street, Riverside Ave, and William Osskerme, those are all part of the Mouse and Promenade Project. We've got that funded for design currently. So, so each of my years, I have efforts for survey, engineering, and right of way up top, construction, second, and then operations and maintenance, third.
Matt, before you go to that, can you just explain the sheet as far as... Matt, before you go to that, can you just explain the sheet as far as the call in shift, schedule begins, schedule ends, current PCI and CBV? I think that's important for the people to understand PCI and CBV.
Yep. So here you can find the road name, the treatment. On some of the road names will have extents, for instance, you know, certain portions of High Street or, or things like that. The treatment, so that's the recommended treatment from the payment conditions index generally. There's also a lot of cases where, you know, we disagreed with their assessment frankly, like sometimes we, they said, you know, reclaim, mill and fill this road. And we said, yeah, we know there's junk under this road. We need to full reconstruct here. You know, so we kind of overrode the, the system. It's, it's a tool, but it's not infallible. Extents, that's the square yards of the road. The lane miles is the length. Schedule begin and schedule end. So the design for this one is beginning in River Street began in 22. We're, we're going to end the design very early in 23. The payment, the PCI score is the pavement conditions, conditions index score. That's the one delivered by the beta group. And that's an assessment, an average assessment of what they thought the condition of the road's surface was. Their assessment does not take into anything else into account. It doesn't take into account sidewalk condition, condition of the drainage underneath, condition of the utilities underneath, retaining walls that are in various states of repair. So that's there. And then the cost benefit value. So the cost benefit value is a number generated by the beta group where they took into account the condition of the road, the repair that the road needed to get, the cost of that repair, the traffic that was being traveled on the road, and then the number of people that lived on the road. And they, they made a mathematical formula out of that and came up with something so they kind of compare, you know, one road to the next of having better, I guess it should a higher, it should really be called benefit cost value because benefit over cost gives you kind of a more positive number. But in this case, it's called cost benefit value. So the higher number generally means like a better value for your investment. So you can see here River Street, which is, I believe it's a collector, which is a higher class of road, has a higher cost benefit value here than Riverside or William Oskar Emery. The traffic on Riverside and William Oskar Emery is generally lower. There's less people living along those. But then we also had to take into account other things such as, you know, the Mouse and Promenade runs all the way around number one pond. If you want a complete facility and a loop, you're going to need to take kind of these roads, Riverside Ave and William Oskar Emery, and lump them in with River Street and make one project out of that in order to create a seamless facility. So there was a lot of thinking that went into this and strategy about, you know, how can we make targeted investments, but how can we make ancillary improvements to those targeted investments that will kind of make something greater than the whole. So also here, you've got downtown Sanford. That's our engineering funding agreement with Maine Department of Transportation for, I believe that's for final design because that's in, it's in 20, 22 to 24. So preliminary, we're about halfway between preliminary and final design right now. The PCI reassessment that I've been talking about, that's the actual number that they proposed to charge us. Central Park, that was something that we signed the contract on for a redesign of Central Park, thinking that we might be able to get into the RACE grant at the time. Maine DOT didn't feel like we had started the project, which we hadn't, but also realized that there were some historical concerns and some potential 4F impacts, which have to do with recreational facilities and parks that because this is federally funded, might become very problematic. So the Central Park project was pulled out of the RACE grant, but I think it's still very important that we keep an eye on it. And once the RACE grant is complete, maybe move in locally and get it done. It certainly is kind of like a capstone for the downtown, so I don't want to, you know, let that go.
But wouldn't it be important if we're going to be doing all that work downtown to make it, maybe that's, that's a priority for the council to decide whether that's going to get done at the same time? Because it just seems to me that you don't want to be tearing stuff up. Like, we're going to be doing it for a few years.
Yeah, so the.
So I'm, I'm just saying that it's something to put on the, the table at least to have as a discussion.
Correct. When, when dealing with federal funds, it can get tricky sometimes. And, and if we were to progress that design and construction along with the downtown, the federal, federal, the eyes of the federal government might say, that's part of the same project and we have these concerns. And not only it's going to hold up your Central Park, but it could hold up the rest of the project.
But I mean, just to follow up, at, at the same time, you could have knowledge of what you're going to need for Central Park so that when you're tear, you've torn up the roads, you do the connections and, right? So you're going to have that planned? Okay.
Yes. I, I think an important point, not to steal Matt's thunder when he gets to the, to the RACE grant, but there will be exterior perimeter, perimeter improvements that will be done to Central Park sidewalks and such under that, that we won't have to do as part of the Central Park project, right? But the design finalizing that, the conceptual is there with the, what is it, the alard, the trees and such under that, that concept is there, the preliminary design, getting, having that completed. And then if we focus local resources on that much smaller project, we don't have to worry about all of the complications that come with, the concerns about the stature that's been moved twice, you know, resting in a his, his historic location, you know? And then the designer of the park itself could put it under historic. So it's those considerations that really, in sitting around the table with MDOT and, and other considerations as far as feds, it was just take it out. Just, just, it's not worth the, the fight over that because we'll lose, we'll lose money on it, so.
And there's quite, as part of the RACE grant preparation, there's a lot of thought put into finances where costs were going. So back in my former life, I used to do preliminary design for New Hampshire Department of Transportation. And I would always get compliments from the final design groups because they say, oh, you put in enough rounding to actually get this job done in the future. Because I would always round up, you know, I'd, I'd do everything I could think of and then I'd round up 25%. And in final design, they say, oh, you know, now we have enough money to actually get the project done. So I've, I've learned to do that, especially on like a five year plan like this, you generally want to be generous when you're rounding. And then a recent project here, roundabout design for 109 and Route 4, doing some hardscape improvements down there. We've engaged CDO landscape architects to, to help us out with that. And then we move into what you see out there this year. Shaw, Kimball, Prescott, Twombly and Burwick are the West Side Village project. That project is, is almost wrapped up for the season. We still have some final wearing course paving to do and some driveways. And then the list after that is pretty short. So hoping to get that out this week or next. We had City Hall parking lot programmed for this year, but probably pushing into next year at this point. Some coordination issues there, obviously trying to get the city staff parking somewhere else. And then we had also had some contingency money for the wall that supports Pioneer Ave because there's been, I believe it's on the ballot for November to talk about taking down the Boiler Building. And this was just in coordination with the planning department, hey, maybe we should set some transportation money aside here just in case we compromise the road. So we don't want to do that. It's our sincerest hope not to, but in case, just in case there is a little placeholder. So then at the bottom, each of these sheets is also our operations and maintenance budget. So we've got the crack seal, street painting, pothole repairs, drainage repairs, ditching, street signs, sidewalks, crosswalks, tree cutting, landscaping, Good Old Brook, which is part of the Good Old Brook Watership Management Plan, utility coordination, gravel crushing and traffic control. So these are all generally items that you'll find in the main DOT standard spec book. So that's why we feel justified as making them part of the roadway CIP program. So basically down here at, at the bottom, you also have your summary. So you've got your subtotals. Here's my rounding estimate down here at the bottom, just the safety factor. Then your total proposed roadway CIP for 22 is, is 3.5 million, leveraging the funds from outside. Yep. So total proposed roadway CIP, almost 3.6 million. The, the 22 funding is at 2.5 million and then we had carryover from last year of just over a million dollars. So they, they just, they balance at about 3.5 million. I think it's, it is fairly conservative to carry over some of this money, but it's also really, you know, problematic if we ran out of it. So we, we try not to run out. If projects come in over budget, we just have to extend the timeline is, is the raw truth of it. We had planned on the West Side Village being a one year project. It came in way overpriced and so we ended up turning it into two. So we're able to continue with the plan, even though the, the timeline is not what was expected. All right. So here's 2023. So we've got Riverside Ave and William Oscar Emery continuing to do the design there. The park and ride, designing the park and ride, this is actually part of the RACE grant too. Incidentally, the RACE grant is exclusively for construction funding. So that was one of the streamlined requirements for the RACE grant is that it's just for construction. We're not going to tie any federal money up in, in the design, which kind of carries a, a small set of additional hurdles. And then targeting High Street. High Street is a Maine DOT priority for roadway. It is, I believe, a collector or a minor arterial. It is eligible for MPI funding. So that was one of the next ones that I was going to target in coordination with our consultants to go after High Street. And that would be from the intersection of River and Washington all the way out to Rushton, which is where we left off repairing that road back in, geez, I think it was like 2017. For construction, we're just about to get this, I probably shouldn't even show you this number, but we're, we're going to get this project out on, out to bid very soon, but River Street's come in. The engineer's estimate is again higher than we anticipated. So I've made the correction in here. Winter Street, doing a shim and overlay on, on that portion of 202, which is one of the last untreated arterials in the city. And then down here to.
Matt, can I just ask a question? When you say construction, is, when you say 2023, is that the construction season of 2023? I mean, does it mean it starts in the spring and goes through the fall? So I'm just trying to, or because you're not talking about a fiscal calendar. You are talking.
Yeah, so that's, that's another way that this kind of gets a little complicated.
Right, because then it gets confusing if you're a person trying to read the thing and say, well, wait a minute, you said I was going to get done in 2022, but it's really, it's a 22, 22, 2023 fiscal cycle?
Right. Yeah, so that, that is very correct. It is confusing and I constantly struggle to wrap my mind around, you know, what have we got? We're, we're always assessing like, what have we got? What have we got in front of us? What do we need to bite off? What do we need to chew? And, and what can we afford to take the next bite of? So again, I never want to run out of money, but, you know, once we sign these contracts, the contractors want to come in and prosecute their work so that we can get the job done.
Well, but this, this spreadsheet is expressing like, it says River Street, start 2023, end 2023. That's single construction season.
Yes. So, so actually that's outdated information. So I can guarantee you that, you know, if, well, I don't want to say guarantee, I don't want to, don't ever want to say guarantee tonight, but I can tell you, you know, River Street, we might be looking at two years, just based on everything going on, pricing, contractors, you know, if, if the consultant came in high on their engineer's estimate, it's really impossible to tell what the contractor is going to open up and see when we open up that bid and they might propose a two year schedule. And a lesson I learned on the West Side Village was that, you know, look at the bid and listen to it. You know, if, if the contractor is saying this is two years or this is, you know, more money than you thought budgeted, do not go and try to fix it. You either accept the bid or don't, but don't, do not try to piecemeal it. Do not try to break items out and save money because it will come back and bite you. And, and it did on, on West Side Village. We, long story there, but.
So I'd like to comment, so 11 years ago, when I interviewed, one of the questions that I was asked is, Mr. Bock, have you observed anything about Sanford? Yes, River Street is horrible. At that time, it hadn't had the overlay. It was alligator cracked. I said, you've lost the street. It's going to full reconstruction because the drainage is, is, is subpar, the base has failed and you've allowed the pavement to fail. 11 years, right? Because funding, funding and getting it into the priority for the funding, so.
So that asterisk by River Street indicates that it was a successful MPI applicant. So Maine DOT is in to that project with us for 600,000, which was the maximum award. Very appreciative of that. Again, your maintenance, crack seal, et cetera, coming down through here. So, you know, so here we've got the summary for, for 23. I highlighted in here that the construction inspection, I can't emphasize enough the importance of construction inspection. The contractor, and we learned this hard lesson this year too, the contractor can get out there and do whatever they want, but unless they've got somebody there all the time, things can get out of control pretty quickly, even when you think you have a reasonable crew. So I, I just note on there that we've got 5% of construction costs in that programmed in there at 154,000. And I'm going to have a proposal to the city manager to talk about a full time construction inspector for the city of Sanford. And we could easily, you know, take that 154 out of the CIP and put it into an, an operations position within the Department of Public Works. They could, they could do construction inspection for the roads, but they could also oversee, you know, building and site development and try to make it, you know, a seamless process for everybody. So 2023 proposed roadway CIP 4.6 million. We increase the CIP next year to 3 million. We've got the 600,000 from Maine DOT for River Street and then another potential carryover from the year previous, which this is shaping, this million dollars is shaping up right now to, to come right. So we should be right on course again.
So can I just ask a question? So looking at that though, and you looked at how little, it just looks to me, little bit of construction. It doesn't look like we're going to do a lot, we're going to do a lot of design and stuff like that, but we're not going to do a lot of actual road construction? Just River Street?
Well.
Because River Street's going to, as Moore just said, suck a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah, that full construction is very expensive. One thing that I'll elaborate on a little bit was that this year in 22, we didn't have monies programmed for preventive maintenance, like, like capital treatments. But we ended up finding some money through the Public Works O and M budget. And then we used a little bit of kind of leftover from the CIP and we were able to overlay School Street, portions of High Street, portions of Rushton Street, portions of Hanson's Ridge Road. So Beulah Street was another one. I'm going to forget one here, but that kind of thing, which requires like much less coordination because those late capital treatments are so thin, it's not as much utility coordination, it's not as much coordination with residents, butters, because we're not really doing stuff that will significantly impact them. We're able to, to make that happen and, and they're honestly just Band-Aid treatments for the roads, some of the roads that are really, really bad shape. So we have been doing Band-Aids as the funds have been available. You know, I'm not.
So you anticipate that we'd still be able, because we do have a lot of streets that are in need of Band-Aids.
Yeah, yeah. And some Band-Aids are better than others. You know, River Street's a good example, that Band-Aid, it's, it's lasting okay, but there's a lot of reflective cracking on River Street if you go down there. And we didn't really get too far outside the travelway. You know, we were hoping that that would last three to five years so that we'd get in there with full reconstructive dollars, and here we are. Cottage Street was another one that we Band-Aided several years ago. And before we did that, we went and did full depth repairs on some of the worst spots with a local contractor. And that's actually, we wanted that to last three to five years and it's probably on year five right now and it's still holding up. So some Band-Aids are better than others. It really depends on your underlying soils. And I've got a whole discussion on roadbed soils if anyone's interested later.
Matt, and this might be coming further along in the presentation, but I know that some citizens are concerned about the maintenance aspects of our budget and where that's going. Will there be any discussion on some of the roads that we're targeting some maintenance work on or?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make, okay, I'm getting ahead of myself.
I, I don't have a comprehensive list of, of maintenance of roads, but back with the beta, with the beta pavement management program, this is the report that they filed. Basically, it has lists of each of the roads by segment, but it also has recommended treatments for those. So some of that is preventive maintenance, such as crack seal and things like that. So those are snapshots and we try to do. So those are snapshots, and we try to do, like, that 100, I think I had, I'm trying to increase the amount of, you know, crack seal in here. I think that went up from $130,000 to $150,000. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to ratchet that up in recognition of we've got more roads that are good, but they're going to reach that three-to-seven-year window where we're going to need that initial crack seal. So, yeah, definitely, we can have that discussion. It's also a much easier discussion to have, because a crack seal is just, you know, you point the crack seal contractor of the road and say, go, you know? Whereas if they're in there doing full reconstruction, you know, there's plans, there's right-of-way, you know, discussions and things like that. So, all right. So here's 2024, and this is where it gets more exciting with the RACE grant. We start to get into some of the-
[laughing]
That's right, yeah. That's right. So we've got, still on the engineering side, we've got the park-and-ride, which is part of the RACE grant. But then we start to free up some funds. So we've got High Street reconstruction in there, hopefully getting some of that MPI money from DOT, but I've got that programmed at $2 million right now. A little bit more, okay. A little bit better. All right. Then we're really wading into the weeds here. We've got Bougie Lane, that's over off of High Street. That's kind of like a gravel road right now. Main Avenue, Island Ave, Davis Ave, Goins Street, Thompson Street, Hammond Street, Tanguay Street. And these are rehab. So these are actually just overlays. If you are familiar with that section of town, there's a lot of old drainage and old utilities under there. And getting into full reconstruction over there right now would be very, very expensive. Cotswold, Beacons Field, they're down the Rosenfield Development in South Sanford, Bowden Bates and Harvard. Those have been on my list for a long time. I really need to get to those, and I've got reclaims on those. So that will be a little bit more expensive treatment, but those streets definitely need it. Overlook Drive and Crossing Brook Road, those are down off of School Street. And then Grant, Joy, King and Kirk are up in Springvale for rehab. Another part of this, too, is that we're really, we want to go by this benefit cost value, but we also, we don't want to leave portions of Sanford, Springvale out. So we want to try to do some work kind of on all corners of the town, just so that, you know, nobody's left out. And again, here's into our maintenance side of things. Just kind of mopping up the rest of the funds. And then, again, I'm carrying construction inspection costs, total proposed roadway CIP of the $4 million, three and a half coming from the roadway CIP, and $600,000 from assuming we get an MPI for High Street. So then in 2025, we've got Emery Street for design. That's also, this is kind of our running theme. It's also MPI eligible, so.
[inaudible]
Oh, yeah, thank you. So, yes, so Emery Street is eligible for MPI because, again, it's a main DOT priority four corridor. So start in design on Emery Street. There's a potential there to kind of split that up, because some of it probably only needs an overlay, while some of it might need full reconstruction. So we'll be finding out more about that as we go. Then construction on High Street, overlaying Emery to Rushton, which is kind of one of the better parts of High Street already. Main Street, far viewed, a roundabout shim and overlay. I was actually approached by main DOT on that this year. They were hoping to come in and do some work there. We were going to try to partner with them, but kind of ran out of steam with them at this point. Then you've got down, again, in South Sanford Airport, Gatehouse, Rubs, Skydeck, Rainbow, Cottesis and Baker. Those are all down at the airport area.
Just a quick question. You mentioned a BPI. Are you trying to get a BPI for that section since it's in the industrial park? Are you working with businesses to see if they're going to invest?
That would be great.
Are you working with businesses to see?
That's what we would like to do. So to my knowledge, I don't think the state has done a BPI yet, have they?
They have. Their latest one was in Waterville, and they created an exit off 95 for a business up there.
So we haven't, I thought we were going to have a BPI here a couple of years ago for a proposed development, but it didn't come forward. So this would be our first opportunity.
It's an underutilized pot of money that main DOT has, and we're continuing to be very supportive of their-
Because, let's face it, those roads, I mean, I've heard that from other roads that we haven't done because there's a business on the road and they're the main person, even though there might be residential. There's not even any residential down there.
Right.
Those are just businesses.
Yep.
So when Commissioner Van Note was here last week, I completely lose track of time. Was that last? Okay. Last week. Here we go. So I was talking with the commissioner that I continue to advocate at the state level, have for years, to put more and more money into the MPI and/or the BPI. And I know the state legislature has put general funds into MDOT now, and the commissioner has advocated and has been able to get more money into the MPI program, because I think for us as local property taxpayers, as well as for the betterment of the entire state of Maine, if you can get that leveraging aspect, if MDOT is getting at least a two-to-one leverage on those funds, as is the local level, up to $600,000, that's the type of partnership I think we need statewide across the multitude of areas in order to move us forward. So, thank you.
So continuing to go down the list, we've got Brunel-Pierce, Ontario. Those are down in South Sanford. Rushton Street, I've just kind of thrown, in the civil engineering terms, we call this a WAG, which is a guess, of a million dollars for Rushton Street. That's the street that the transfer station's on, and it is a testament to flexible pavement design. It is, it's just amazing what it's doing. So we don't really have our heads wrapped around that quite yet. I anticipate it'll be a lot of coordination with the main Department of Environmental Protection and their landfill division. Riverbank, Cove Street, Pond Street, Field Street, River View and South Street, that's a neighborhood rate on the Mouse and Promenade, on the inside of the Mouse and Promenade. So those are all in very tough shape. We actually were considering doing a Band-Aid for those this year, but they're so far out of shape, unfortunately, that it would be a lot of money. Basically, the shape of the road is gone. Usually, you want a road that sheds water, it's high in the middle and low on the sides, and this road is kind of low in the middle and high on the side. So trying to pave that out is a very expensive proposition. So again, all of our maintenance items, and our rounding, our CIP at 3.9 million, and then the proposed available funding at four. So then, for 2026, we've got the year of the RACE grant. So this is the year that the RACE grant is targeted to begin with the main department of transportation, trying to think ahead a little bit and start survey and engineering on Winter Street and School Street. You can see downtown Sanford, the cost, you know, this number that you should not remember, because we probably shouldn't be saying it. And then if there are other amenities the city wants, trying to program kind of a emergency, not an emergency fund, like a, just an additional fund in there of about a million dollars in case we want something special like art or something downtown. It'd be very, very, it'd be very nice art. Yeah. Anyway, just, again, putting contingency in there just in case. Again, we've, you can see, again, a raise in the crack seal amount, street painting, et cetera, all these things. So we've got engineering construction at 36 and change. And then, you know, the funding is that we're fully realized for our strategy for ramping up the roadway capital improvement program at $4 million. The RACE grants kicking in a total of $31 million. We've got this million-dollar contingency, and then, you know, basically 36 and 36. So incidentally, that RACE grant is not going to all happen in 2026. So the construction years for that are '26 through 2030. So it's actually quite a long project. It will be up to main DOT to do the traffic taming and the contractor on how they want to prosecute the work. So, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a wild ride. It'll be great. So, all right, so back to the-
This is just really, it's not that it's depressing. It's just that that long, it just seems like it should happen faster.
Yes. Yep. I spent four years designing Route 1 in Agunkwit.
Really?
Four years.
That's what it took to do that? And that road is-
It had beautiful concrete underneath it.
Yeah.
I remember that as part of your interview.
The traffic signal down at Old Mill, Alumni Drive and 109 was four years in the planning. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty standard. Yeah. This is on the fast track.
Hey, may I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Thank you for being here. So there seemed to be a delay on the 109, Route 109 project that's still currently going on right now?
Current project, yeah.
Yeah, the current project. Could you touch on some of the delays over the summer? Because it seemed like they jumped from doing 109 to 202, and then, you know, then everything kind of stopped. But then now it seems like they're racing, because they've been doing it like three days in a row, like nonstop. So I just wanted to get some clarity on that.
Is it okay if we just, can you write that down? We'll get to that piece, but I just want to let him get through the-
Really quickly, it's a main DOT project, and-
It's not ours.
Yeah, it's not ours, unfortunately. But I don't have a lot of good answers for you. I don't, I don't have, I have been mailed the meeting minutes, but I'm just not in the loop.
Okay, I appreciate it. I've just been hearing a lot of feedback from the residents on that. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right. So now, in '26, that RACE grant, what is it? So rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity is the acronym for RACE. It's been approved for $25 million funding grant from the US DOT with additional funding coming from main DOT and the city of Sanford. The scope of work that you're all familiar with is here and is graphically depicted here. So it's Route 109 from Lebanon down to Emery, all of Washington Street, School Street from Washington to Elm, all of William-Oscar Emery and Riverside Avenue, and then Cottage Street from River Winter Cottage out to the urban compact line.
Just-
And it's also the park-and-ride behind Cumberland Farms.
Right. We do need to prepare ourselves for that.
Do you have a, do you think they're going to start, they're going to do them all at once? Are they going to say, okay, let's do Cod Street in this section? Do you think it's going to be a little bit of everything all at once in complete mayhem? You're thinking they're going to start somewhere, then do this other section? Okay. That's why the four years.
Oh, yeah.
Not because they're going to stay on Main Street and not leave for four years.
Right.
Okay. I think people should know that, because I don't think, it's not going to be four years of a torn-up Main Street. It's not going to be four years of a torn-up Cottage Street. It's going to be Cottage Street will have its moment, William-Oscar Emery and Riverside will have their moment, and then downtown will have their, you know, it's going to all come at different times.
It'll still be a mess.
Oh, it's going to be a disaster.
So, so main DOT goes through what they call traffic taming?
It'll look good at the end.
And they consider detour routes, they consider circulation paths. And to be honest with you, they take the city's desires greatly into effect. Like, if we said, you know, we absolutely have to have all businesses open on all times downtown, you know, they're going to try to hold to that. It's if, this is, in its truest sense, a partnership. Main DOT does not want to come in here and try to strong-arm us. And in turn, we do not want to try to strong-arm them. But they are looking for input. They're looking for responsible advocacy for our interests, and that's how you make a successful partnership. Everybody gives a little and everybody takes a little. So with any project, it does come along with the construction delays and the headaches and everything else. But right now, really, everything's on the table. You know, if we decided, and we're kind of kicking around ideas, you know, if we wanted to do, you know, Main Street through downtown is southbound only in the morning and northbound only in the afternoon, they could make that happen. Just write it into the traffic control plan for the project, and then we'd have to sign the detours accordingly. I've been on projects where they have one person who's riding around in a truck all day just maintaining the signs, you know, and turning them this way and that, standing them back up. That's a real thing.
So Matt, what Mike had brought up about what is happening with 109 and the DOT, we will have more control over that aspect, and we have no control over how the DOT has, because I get what he's talking about, that detour, which we had nothing to do with, and the complaints that people have. But, you know, at some point, you actually have to do the road. I get that. There's no way you can do it with somebody driving over it.
So a lot of, I guess, first of all, big disclaimer, you know, I talked about in the beginning, like, an umbrella agreement for all those projects altogether. The city and the state have not come up with that yet. So-
Right.
Part of that will dominate that conversation is, is this going to be a state-driven job? Is this going to be a local project administration job? And, you know, I think, I think it would behoove us to try to push it towards the state. But with that, we will give up some control, but we also give up some headaches. But I think it's going to be important through that process that we are all patient and kind of come with the understanding that, you know, there's delays, there's, and I know the contractor that's out there on 109, they've had a bunch of delays. They're out on the turnpike earlier this summer, working nights. And, you know, we're actually competing with the same contractor to get the paving done on West Side Village. So we're very acutely aware of the delays. It's just, we're just unfortunately not in control of our own destiny sometimes.
When you go back to the last slide that you had, the, is, with the scope, the bulleted scope that you had, was that the same as the arrangement for, I believe, they also call it PPI under MDOT? Each leg of the RACE grant is broken, broken into an independent project.
Yes.
It's all one project that's being bid, but it's also being broken into independent units. So when the public hearing process starts in November, it'll be easier for the public to come in and say, oh, I'm on this particular section, so I can only focus on those, that portion, if you so choose, and such under that. And they're going to create an independent website for each segment of the RACE grant, so they can, they can track it, track the public response, such under that.
And that, that product is basically an evolution of how the RACE grant came about. Those originally were all separate projects, but they were all following federal guidelines. They were all being prosecuted by consultants with the chops to pull off a federal job, so that they were very good candidates ultimately to bundle together for the US DOT.
Hey, Matt, a quick question. So with this RACE grant project, is there any plans for DOT to rehab or fix the route to a two bridge going over Number One Pond?
Not at this time. And we've already kind of thrown out some ideas. Girl Palmer, one of the consultants we work with, has also brought in a CEDO landscape architect. I can't say enough good things about a CEDO landscape architects. They were part of the visionaries that started this whole thing. And a CEDO had like a really, some really cool ideas for Number One Pond. And before I kind of shouted those from the rooftops, because I thought they were really neat, I went to DOT, I said, what do you think about this? And they said, oh, it's not part of the original proposal, so, you know, don't even think about it this time. So I think the game plan is to stick with what we've got proposed currently and not try to let the scope creep too far. That's going to be very important in the long run, not only for financial, but, you know, as part of the design process, they're also thinking about right-of-way and other, particularly like the bridge, you know, that brings in bridge design and bridge construction. So I think they'll stop short of the joint.
Yeah, I appreciate that. No, I'm only thinking because, you know, Route 202 right there, it's heavily trafficked by 18-wheelers. And, you know, I know we do bridge studies with, you know, conjunction with DOT, you know, every so often. So I was just curious, because we're spending the investment within the immediate area, you know, why would they leave that out? You know what I mean? That's just, you know, one of my concerns.
Yeah, it's a good one. But again, they're going to, they're going to stick to the scope. If we've got something else we want to throw in, it's just going to have to be either concurrent or after the fact. And that's not to say that they wouldn't consider like something like that, like an MPI or something like that in the future. But also particularly for the bridge, that's outside of my professional practice. Like, I'm not a structural engineer, so to municipally lead a bridge, you'd want to have like a strong structural consultant onboard just to begin with, and then start the conversation with there. But DOT keeps inspections on those, and they keep us up to date. But yeah, DOT keeps inspections on those and they, they keep us up to date. Okay, so the four components of the Raze Grant, first is the downtown. Some of you may have seen a lot of this already. But this is an excerpt from the PPI actually, with some of the visioning for the Sanford Tower here, or is it Sunset Tower? So envisioning a bus stop and a crosswalk here, that was one of the comments received from some of the public hearings necessary. They also identified some high crash locations. So, high crash locations and high crash corridors within the downtown, which helped justify the safety aspects for the, for the planning partnership initiative and ultimately the Raze Grant. So we've got roadway construction in the downtown, including the base gravels, pavements, utilities, widened sidewalks along the storefronts, amenities for seating, plantings, parking oversight, lighting, geometric improvements, et cetera. So, that's downtown. Second is the Mouse and Promenade. So unfortunately, this one, I think this visualization would have been a, a lot better had they kind of placed the camera over where the 10-foot wide multimodal path is. So you've kind of got the red circle showing where the, where the Mouse and Promenade is. But unfortunately, you've got like a lot of traffic on the street and some grass kind of obscuring the path. So, the 10-foot wide multimodal path will be called, yeah, we're, we're calling it the Mouse and Promenade at this point. But it'll be continuous loop around number one pond for recreational purposes. You know, if you want to take a walk at lunchtime, you can go around the pond. There's already people jogging this on a daily basis. And we've got, we've done a parking study, which I'll show you a little bit later, to kind of right-size the amount of parking that needs to be out there. And we've got all these amenities that go on in the pond for, for events. So you've got the fireworks, water ski show, and then maybe in the future, a 5K road race. So the Raze Grant will be reconstructing the entirety of essentially the west side of number one pond, which is William Oscar Emery Drive and Riverside Avenue. We're going in this year after the east side of the pond, which is River Street. And then there's a short portion on Washington Street, which will be covered by the downtown portion of the Raze Grant. So linking all three of those together will get you the Mouse and Promenade. Cottage Street, so Cottage Street was first presented to us, geez, back in like, it must have been like 2015. But it was one of those kind of legacy projects that main DOT had and they've been kicking around for quite a while. They came and did a preliminary hearing with us and we responded back to them saying, you know, that's nice. They went from North Ave up to the, out beyond the hospital, the urban compact line. And we said, that's really nice, but how about you like double the length of the job? Then they said, well, what's in it for us? And I said, well, how about a million dollars? And at the time, it was a $2 million job. So they said, oh, you know, let's talk. So I came back and talked with Steve and Ronnie and figured out a way we could save a million dollars over five years by taking $200,000 out each of the years and signed a state municipal agreement to, to make that happen. So now the Raze Grant has come along, that state municipal agreement is about to be superseded. And that's kind of where, you know, that million dollar contingency I had in there came from. So that, that remaining portion of Cottage Street that we wanted to prove is actually a very relatively tight constrained corridor. That's very tight right-of-way through there. There's dense utilities overhead and underground. It's also got the 12 kid homes, known as the 12 Apostles, that are eligible for the National Historic Register, which is problematic for the city to tackle on our own. We've got the signal improvements at River Winter Cottage and access improvements towards the Mill District. So if you're coming into Sanford, you want to take a left off of 202 and go down to the Mills right now, sometimes you've got a lot of oncoming traffic. It's very difficult to make that turn. This will give you a protected left turn lane so that you can make that turn. So.
So Matt, can I just ask a question about that street?
Yep.
Because Cottage Street, because it's so tightly constrained, there's sidewalks on both sides. The houses are really close to those sidewalks or there's walls. So I've already had a couple of residents who've contacted me and concerned about what's gonna happen and that they're concerned. And I tried to explain to them that this won't happen without somebody sitting down and speaking with everybody there. Then they're just not gonna take their wall and have the road go right up to, I mean, they, they heard that the sidewalks were gonna be gone.
Okay, so first of all, the Raze Grant is gonna be using federal dollars. And with federal dollars comes along with the, the federal right-of-way process. So when main DOT is doing one of those projects, that right-of-way process, you know, they're, they're, I think, on the schedule budgeting for like a, a two-year right-of-way process in order to contact each resident individually.
Right.
Go over, once the plan impacts are complete, they contact each of those residents individually. And with their right-of-way appraisers, go over like highest and best value for any impacts on their property. Main DOT likes to rebuild roads. They do not like to buy property. So they don't see that as like a high value of, of the dollars that they've been given. They will if they absolutely have to, but, you know, they're, they're not interested in just spending dollars to acquire property. They, they don't like to do that. They want to work with, within what they've got.
If I recall, Matt, this is one of the projects that actually has changed quite drastically because of, it seems like they're not doing a lot of what they originally intended when they came to the, the community with the project. They've changed quite a bit of what they're doing on this, from what I remember.
Such as?
Such as making a huge widening up by the hospital. Last I looked, it wasn't really that much of a, too much of a change up that way. And then I know the 12 Apostles affected it. There's quite a bit that affected what they hoped to do versus what they're doing.
So it may still be a, a narrow, the, the road that it is, it'll just have, and the hill is gonna not.
They're not taking the hill down, I don't think anymore.
The hill's not gonna be taken down.
As excessively as they thought, I guess.
It's, it's actually been through the wringer a couple of times. They were doing it internally and then they've ended up farming it out to one of the primary consultants for the job now. So yeah, there, there probably have been some changes, but again, they're, they're looking to absolutely minimize their right-of-way footprint whenever they can.
Right, okay. So that's good to know. And that's helpful for me to be able to tell people who ask me, but that they will be contacted.
And this is also a 25 mile an hour zone, which has frequent, you know, speed concerns. There's a school right there, so.
We don't want to make it a roadway. It's hard enough coming down the hill.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Right.
Right, you have to.
That's good to know. Thank you.
All right. Then the fourth portion is this park and ride. It's located behind the Cumberland Farms at the intersection of Route 109 and Main Street. It's the leftover portion of the Emerson School. And we had approached main DOT about a state municipal agreement here in order to create a park and ride to service amongst other things, the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. So the circulation pattern in here is intended to accommodate that Greyhound bus. It does have an easement across the Cumberland Farms entrance on Emerson Street. And indirectly, though not a deed of easement, to the intersection signal at Main Street and Emery. So there is some circulation opportunity. We've had a verbal from Cottage, from Cumberland Farms that they're okay with this plan going forward. We anticipate doing some drainage work on that remaining kind of tab of property in the back to infiltrate water off of the parking lot. And then we're also gonna be leaving a few spaces available for a potential car charging window there. We cannot, as part of the project with federal dollars, actually install car chargers or profit in any way from that. But we can kind of leave a, an envelope for future development. So this is just one example of some of the preparation we're going into. This is actually a, a parking study that we did with Girl Palmer, looking at the number one pond, Mouse and Promenade facility and the anticipated existing and proposed parking out there. So they went through and identified kind of the three corners of the Mouse and Promenade. But part of that also included, you know, much of the parking in the downtown area, which happened to be smack dab on top of the downtown PPI and consequently the Raze Grant. So we got a good kind of snapshot of, of what's out there. We have the opportunity to kind of dynamically, you know, visualize that in the future and say, you know, we need more or less parking. But with the plans that they just recently completed for River Street, you know, they, they based the number of parking spots along River Street based on the potential future demand for parking for the facility. So. And also based on public input of people living along the street saying, I need a parking space out front. I've got an at-home business or, or something like that. So they tried to take all that into account and be very context-sensitive with their design. Here's the schedule for the Raze Grant. Essentially, you've got, you know, initial team meeting back in '21. We're here, you know, at the end of '22. We're about to have that formal public contact, which is gonna be in November, and I'll get to that in a minute. But you've got, you see like most of those lists are these milestones that are for main DOT. You know, these are standard milestones for any large federal project. So it seems like it's a long way off, but, you know, the last two, it's probably hard to see on this, but the last two dates on here, construction begins in, in spring of '26, construction complete in October of 2030. So that's just the, the two tabs. Everything in here, a lot of these things are a little bit of minutio in the public eye, but they're also very important for the federal process when we're securing and maintaining that federal funding. We have to, main DOT has to go through all these steps and they have to be well documented. So that's the project schedule. In conclusion on the Raze Grant, we've got a public hearing scheduled for this, for, not this Thursday, but Thursday, November 17th, right here. We're gonna have an open house in person from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, where there's gonna be plans on the wall and people can ask questions. We'll document your questions and get answers for you. Most likely, if not then, we'll have them up on the, the main DOT website. I'll mention in a second. Then from 6:00 to 8:30, there's gonna be a public hearing hybrid presentation, which is in-person and virtual. You'll be able to ask questions and get answers in real time and also leave comments about your, your thoughts on the project. Throughout the process, there's gonna be multiple opportunities for public outreach and feedback. The E in Raze is equity. So part of that is having an equitable opportunity to contribute to the project and, and give feedback. Reach out to all stakeholders of, of all, you know, types. Main DOT will then also be hosting a virtual public informational website. So they're gonna, as Steve mentioned, they're gonna be taking each of the, each of the components of the Raze Grant. They're gonna have a breakout portion. And then throughout the design, throughout the public process, there's gonna be videos, there's gonna be presentations, there's gonna be information. And then even into construction, they're gonna keep that website up and you're gonna be able to find out the latest and greatest information, hopefully, on what's going on, maybe right outside your front door. So as I said before, main DOT and Sanford need to reach a new state municipal agreement regarding the project. Main DOT will be obligating all the federal funds by fall of 2025, meaning that they are locked and loaded and the construction is scheduled for '26. So. So what's the future of the infrastructure investment in Sanford? This is, looks very similar to a slide I had before. So we've got all these kind of surrounding partnerships. So now we've rolled in on the state municipal partnership programs. We've got the VPI, which stands for Village Partnership Initiative. And essentially, what Sanford has gone through in order to get the Raze Grant, main DOT is now branding as a Village Partnership Initiative. So they're encouraging other communities to responsibly advocate for themselves, to use Sanford as an example for other towns and municipalities to step to the plate and participate in their transportation infrastructure destiny together. It's sometimes tough to believe, but we're kind of getting some horror stories about, you know, main DOT coming to a town and they don't want the improvement main DOT is proposing and they get sent away. Well, not only are we in favor of it, we're, we're at, you know, again, responsibly advocating and trying to guide the processes as much as we're able and be good partners. And, and when you do that, when you have an ask or a complaint or, or whatever, they're generally more receptive of it because we've got a stake in the game. So these continued partnerships nationally, locally, regionally, are, are all the recipe for success for the city of Sanford.
Thank you, Matt. So I think I'm gonna just throw it open. If there's anybody in the audience that wants to get up and talk about their road or ask, you got them right here. You can ask them, you know, when your road's gonna be up and explain to them. I think that that was part of what we wanted to do, is take it off of Facebook, you know, and. Sure. Just tell us who you are and where you live.
My name is William D. Matier and I live on Tall Pines Road. First of all, I want to start off by saying that the highway department has been very, very good. Every time I've called for the last six years, they come down and they take care of all the potholes right of way. The problem is, is that you can only put a Band-Aid on for so long. When I called this year, I told them there was actually a, I'm not an engineer, but there's a sinkhole. The water goes from the lake underneath the road and over to the other side. And there's a big dip right there. And it's just a matter of time before that sinks right in. Before you even get down a quarter of a mile, there were two big dips in the road. The potholes have been taken care of, like I said, the last six, seven years, but they're just getting bigger and deeper. And I think it's beyond repair. But I like, again, I want to say that, you know, they've done a good job coming down. When I call, they come down. One year I had to call them back because they did the top of the road and I said, you know, can they come down and do the bottom part of the road? There was more potholes down there. They come right out the very next day and I had it all repaired. So I want to say very good job with the highway department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, our, our crew is dedicated and they work very hard. So we appreciate those comments. I would also add that, you know, I think you kind of alluded to it, some of the archaeology in Sanford has, sometimes people have built really where they shouldn't have or not done it quite the right way. So some of those sinkhole areas, we really scratch our heads. Sometimes we don't know what's going on. We're just trying to guess and, yeah. You, you find very unexpected things when you put the shovel on the ground.
You know, somebody just goes down and takes a look at it, you know, an engineer and they could tell you it's, it's bad down there. I think the road is only maybe three quarters of a mile long. But it's just the first maybe quarter of a mile, half a mile, that's bad. The rest of the road isn't that bad.
Put it on the list. Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on up. You don't mind.
Good evening. I'm Tom Lapierre. I live on Cottage Streets, Cottage and Brook.
Okay.
Cottage Street, like you've been talking, for years has been Band-Aided. Lot of heavy traffic, 25 miles an hour. Nobody knows what 25 mile an hour is. Tractor trailers especially. So one thing, the road is not wide enough. Walk on the sidewalk. When I walk, I have to walk looking down. I can't look around because of the poor condition the sidewalks are in. Period. And when I'm walking down, I'm to the right of the sidewalk, tractor trailers, tires are within inches of the sidewalk. Where you think the mirrors are? Very close to your head. So I've been talking about Cottage Street for years, way back with Mr. Wilkin. And Eugene, these people I could talk to. Folks, I can't talk to these people anymore. The town taught to Pete when he was a foreman. So I have complaints. The manholes, the manhole covers on, on Cottage Street at the intersection, Cottage and Brook, there's three. In the trail of the tractor trailers, they hit them day and night, fast and slow. Heavy, loads and empty. Shakes my house. I'm getting shell shocked. Okay? So, like I said, I've talked to the guys out there like Pete. So I'm not a computer guy. I wrote an email to a man right here in this room. Sent my email to a lady, a secretary, I don't know who, over to the highway department. They're not ours. They belong to CC who are there. Contact them. Folks, I pay my taxes. These are your roads. These are your roads. Patch 'em. Please, clean the manholes up. I wanted it done before winter. Now we're gonna have the plows. This rots. And when I talk about Pete and anybody else, highway, when they plow the road, they go by fast enough, they push all the snow past the sidewalk on my front lawn. They used to pick up the snow pa- the snowbanks for years. Every storm, pick up the snowbank at night. Now there's no snowbank. We run our lawns. Couple of storms, uh I think Larry Stone was playing supervisor a couple of nights. The sidewalk plow threw the snow on my porch. But I went out barefoot in the middle of the night. I don't care if he ran me over, he threatened to call the cops. Go ahead. I shovel that. So if you don't want to, if you want that job and you don't wanna talk to us, you're doing a great job. But I have complaints. Thank you.
Thank you. Um and I understand, I live on Lebanon Street, and so I understand those complaints. We are trying to slow down the traffic on Cottage Street, and I don't know how good a job we've done, but um when the police are there, it slows it down. But can you speak to what is probably gonna happen?
Uh so for the first issue raised, the roadway being narrow, um without, you know, taking private property, there's really not much, or or getting rid of sidewalks, there's not a lot of answers there. Uh as far as loose manhole covers that belong to somebody else, uh the city has good standing relationships with their local underground utilities, but if those are like communication manholes or somewhat, you said it was maybe CCTV or somebody. Those those relationships aren't as strong. Uh generally, we have challenges with the overhead utilities, which are um sometimes owned by other corporations where we don't, that of, some of whom have had a lot of retirements, and we don't have kind of those personal relationships anymore, or professional relationships. So we're kind of counting on calling the same eight-hundred number that everybody else has to call and trying to get those things solved. Um and and as far as the manholes being low, uh that's another challenge that we've faced in that in the summer, maybe that manhole is low, and maybe in the winter, the plow blade is hitting it. So that manhole is actually moving with the frost up into the road. So when you adjust the manhole, when you bring that manhole up and, you know, to like three-eighths from the roadway surface, you you then end up creating a problem where you've got a collision in the winter. Part of that may be addressed pretty well as far as the constr- when the construction process happens, because they could put in underdrain in the road and have better draining soils for the base to stop that basin from raising and lowering. Um again, that's that's something that we we've identified in the winter, going, you know, hitting these basins that are up high in the winter and going back in the spring, and they're low. You know, how do we hit this in the winter? Well, the thing's moving. Um and then snow on the front lawn, so uh that that is a tricky one, actually. So um in coordination with uh M M A, the Maine Municipal Association, the city does have a prescriptive right to shed water from the roadway. Uh it does not have a right to blow snow onto your front porch, and I do remember that incident. I'm sorry for that. Um I was around then, um and we did a very strong discussion with that employee at the time. It wasn't the one you mentioned, but of somebody else. Um so yeah, obviously, we we do, we do have the ability to kind of move the snow off the road. Uh part of that is public safety, also with the schools there and and children walking on the sidewalks, it's imperative that we get those cleaned off. We do continue to do snow removal at night. Uh the city council and manager have authorized investments for new sidewalk plows, so we're we're doing that more efficiently than ever. Uh the sidewalk conditions uh continue to be a challenge. The concrete material is very durable and long-lasting, um and those, some, that's kind of some of its best qualities and some of its worst qualities. When it's, when it's good, it's it's functioning very well. When it's bad, it's it's difficult to deal with and hard to replace. So um the good news is that we've got a targeted capital investment that that's coming right by your front doorstep, and I think we did Brook Street, that corner of Brook Street, back in twenty-sixteen. So we do have, uh I think, a good track record of trying to treat the area responsibly. Um but yeah, we're gonna continue to face challenges as as noted to Maine DOT originally. It's a very tight corridor, and um you've got very similar challenges that you see downtown. You've got um large volumes of traffic coming through, eighteen-wheelers, and also the expectation of pedestrian activity. And eighteen-wheelers and pedestrians don't mix very well. So um I think there's been a regional study about a Sanford bypass, which the the writing on the wall is that that's not gonna happen anytime ever. Uh so we're basically uh in a position where we're forced to try to slow that traffic down. So we can use engineering controls through the design process and create some things to try to slow the traffic down, such as bumpouts, uh speed tables or something that's I've I've kind of hedged against in the past. Um I was just told about some speed tables by uh Mike Cassely, who had a European tour after his retirement, and told me all about the traffic calming conditions in Europe, because that's just how he's wired. So he said, there's these marvelous speed tables over there, and uh, you know, they're not short bumps. They're kind of like long, and you travel on them for a while, and then you go down. And people figure out after a while, like, don't go too fast through here. So um all these things are some things that we can consider to try to slow some of that traffic down, but you know, at the end of the day, you've still got that eighteen-wheeler traffic coming through on a on an arterial, coming through the heart of York County, so...
So there's just no way that we can redirect large truck traffic up at Shaw's Ridge, especially if all they're doing is going out of town?
Um...
You you understand, I I get it, because there's, it's hard when you're coming down that hill, just as when they're coming down off of two-oh-two into town the other way, that they're using those brakes, they're making like all kinds of noise. It is really annoying, and it's not safe. So I guess what I would be asking is if I, that as we look at that reconstruction, is that we try to build in as many um features that we can that will slow the traffic and maybe encourage trucks to not want to come down that way and to take the other ways around town.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to look at the regional traffic, we'd have to look at trucking routes, we'd have to consult with Maine DOT about, you know, what we can and can't do.
Right.
Obviously, they're gonna take our recommendation very seriously, but also you have to consider that if we detour all the trucks onto two-twenty-four, all of a sudden, we've also got residents up there, which also leads to Springdale and...
I'm not, I'm, go ahead, Maury, you live there.
I, well, I guess it would be interesting to see why the trucks are going through. If they're just heading to Spalding, where are they going once they hit the Spalding? Could they have, you know, continued down ninety-five um and then come in from there? You know, where are they heading? Sometimes I think they're avoiding the weigh stations. I do think that that is happening. And so that might be something to consider, because I think it get, there are days it's crazy, and then there's days there's nothing, right? And so I think it's a...
...trails, well, they're loaded and logged, they're not on the dirt.
Right. They're avoiding weigh stations.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and I think that that's um part of what's happening, and so there might be just ways to discourage them in that way, say, you know, if you come this way, we're gonna, you know, if you, we're gonna open the weigh station on ninety-five, we're gonna open one before you even come into downtown. It'd be nice to have one just temporary before, like Alfred somewhere, where they, if they're coming that way, they're gonna get caught, and they're gonna start paying some hefty fines. Because I gotta tell you, eighteen-wheelers coming through that way, the day-to-day ones that are servicing Hanaford or someone like that, they're fine. It's the days when you get this excessive amount of trucks, and I'm sure there's a weigh station open.
That's certainly something that we would coordinate with the police department, the state police.
The state police. I I would be interested to see if there's some resolution in that direction, because, I mean, you come in, why would you come this way, really, as as servicing? A lot of those stores are serviced from the south, so...
Even on the trucks with those logs, they are so full and go by. One day, I counted ten trucks going by the house, and I pray to God that those sides don't let go, because they are moving to get off that hill.
I think the weigh stations, I think that's what, where your trigger is. They they send a signal out to their buddies, and that's it.
Exactly what they do.
Steve?
Uh uh so I've lived this life. I've had my own tractor trailers on the road hauling um produce, potatoes, which are hard to axle out uh with with weighing. So you're absolutely right. Um so you can, you can only haul eighty thousand pounds legal, doesn't matter how many axles you have on the interstate, which you can haul a hundred thousand pounds legal on, off the interstate, right? So I worked with Senator Collins when I lived in northern Maine on that particular issue to change the interstate to a hundred thousand pounds. It's designed for it. It will take that wear, wear and tear and abuse, but but to date, we've been unsuccessful in changing that federal weight limit.
Lower our...
Well, be be careful what you wish for. If you have seen inflation at the grocery grocery store now, you start lowering that that weight limit. So uh it it's a horrible thing. I used to haul potatoes down out of Brewster County and and haul down Route Two and go through all these small towns, weaving my way through because I legally could with a hundred thousand pounds, but I couldn't go on the interstate. And if you know anything about the economics of hauling product, that's the way it works. No, it's not.
That's why those manholes are all dented in, because they're so heavy. When they redid that road, it was beautiful. Then, all of a sudden, those trucks were coming through, and those manholes are just going further and further down. And they were so tight, one night, I got woken up because it was trying, someone was trying to open those bins from whatever company was there, and they were pounding, delivering light bulbs.
But, you know, when you're when you're driving on the interstate, thi- think of the number of logging trucks you see on the interstate. You're more likely to see a dinosaur up there.
Yeah, never see 'em.
Because they don't. They they can't. They can't economically haul at eighty thousand pounds and make a living and go on to, go on to the interstate. That's why Gra- Grammar Road, that is a constant east-west pass-through with people hauling heavy loads.
So you think that those loads, though, are legal on our roads?
I know they are. Well...
Let's, I mean, you think they...
A hundred thousand pounds off the interstate, right?
Right. So what are the chances that they're actually a hundred thousand and not more than a hundred thousand?
Oh, likely they're a hundred and twenty.
So if we were to do what Maury suggested and get some coordination, we could actually discourage them, maybe make them choose another route, not through the place where we get, we know what's going on.
The moment that way wagon goes out in any location, they all know, and they reroute.
Right.
That's why you see them on particular days. You're absolutely right.
Well, I think that what we, I I just really would like us to to not let this, you know, we're we're just gonna spend a lot of money. It's all of our money, so let's just figure out, you know, if there's anything that we can do, we should do whatever it is that we can do.
But but the last comment that I'll leave you with, because I've I've advocated for this for decades now, is, you know, pay attention, you know, talk with your your congressional people and such under that. This is something that should be fixed.
Right.
It should, that that traffic should be on the federal highway system and not in our hometowns, in the middle of our downtowns, because they legally can get through there or they can't travel on the interstate system.
Well...
...to uh City Council.
Right, exactly, exactly. No, we, exactly. Senator King, Senator Collins.
I believe I told you, I've been advocating for this for decades, because I used to drive and own my own trucks. I've been trying to get this changed for decades.
...for decades. I travel Oxford County, you know, eight times a week. You can't get rid of Oxford County.
Because it's a hundred thousand on on two-oh-two, and it's eighty thousand on the interstate.
Yeah, I just don't want 'em barreling down Cottage Street at, you know, forty-five miles an hour when the speed limit's twenty-five, so I don't, I mean, give 'em a few tickets too. I mean, I just, I agree, there's a school there. We just need to um be aware of it, and I think as a as a council, if what we need to do is advocate for that kind of change, then we need to start doing that. We just can't just let it go, so...
You kind of wonder if the Sanford Police Department was forewarned of the weigh station. So they start paying attention.
Can can I ask anyone who's speaking in the audience to please come to the microphone? Because people on Zoom can't hear you out in the room. Thank you.
Go ahead, Maury, you finish, and then you can come on up to the...
Yeah, come on up. I'm just wondering if there's a way to be notified so the P D can actually do extra patrols on Cottage Street on a day that the weigh station's open. Catch speeders, slow them down. I mean, we might not be able to weigh them right away, but we might be able to be notified and try to slow heavy trucks down and give them ex- pretty hefty tickets. It would be nice.
Go ahead, just tell us what your name is.
My name's Ginger, and I live on Twombly Road. I'm fairly new to the area. Um so initially about the wait stations, um I know a lot of state police have contracts with tow truck companies. I'm not gonna reference the one that I'm referring to, but I have family members that work for tow truck companies. And um ideally, the state police have a contract with other companies, and when they turn on the weigh stations, they are, you know, mandating the trucks abide by the laws. And um I believe city manager is absolutely correct with the mandates on the weights and whatnot, and so of course, they all get word that the weigh stations are open on the highway, so they go to the side roads. And the York County Wait Station or York Main Wait Station is open on Route One, and they seek alternate routes. So that's kind of how we end up with so many trucks in Sanford. But it's not gonna matter if you do the weigh station. I live on Twombly Junction of Shaw and Twombly, right across from Maury's um apartments, and we have that sign up there, no trucks. As soon as there's an accident on two-oh-two, where do they come? Right down Twombly, because that's where GPS sends them. The sign doesn't matter. Signs don't matter. So you, we can put up all the signs, all the detours we want, their GPS sends them right down our roads. So it it just really doesn't matter. But the real reason I'm standing here is um, thank you, Matt, for your um presentation. I kind of have some feedback. That's why my road is on the Needs Work Line, uh Twombly. We're not finished, but we're really close. Um, sorry, I'm short. I should probably turn this a little. So anyway, this past weekend, we got to enjoy the beautiful weather by working in our yard. So this is always a great time to meet and greet your neighbors. Those who know me, I love my porch. It's it's friggin' amazing. I love it. So anyway, when our neighbors pass by via foot, bicycle, skateboard, car, motorcycle or truck, even eighteen-wheelers, business vehicles, et cetera, those of us who are gathered around the front yard, socializing, sipping on a cool, a cold beverage, enjoying the campfire, gaining to know one another, we cheer on those who successfully stop at the stop signs. When when they do stop, they tend to roll down their window and give feedback. When was that put there? So we have what we call the invisible stop sign. That's driving from Main Street down Twombly Road, turning left onto Shaw Street. So turning from Main Street, it's often met with navigating parked vehicles after entering onto Twombly Road. Knowing the high number of driveways at the beginning of Twombly Road on the right and the parking garage lot on the left keeps the driver's eyes busy until on top of the stop sign. The yellow stop-ahead sign is barely visible due to branches. Recently, the leaves have evicted, so it's a little bit more visible. Due to the turning angle onto Twombly Road and the visibility distance to see the stop sign is short, if at all. The stop sign is not lit by lights at night. The stop sign is not visible when turning onto Twombly Road when coming from two-oh-two or Hanaford. The stop sign has not been here before. Why is it here now, since there's going to be a crosswalk, especially since there are no signs posted by this intersection, yet there are signs posted farther down Twombly Road for other crosswalks? It is mounted higher compared to stop signs on older streets. The stop sign is visible once one is aware it is present. So now we're most stopped at stop sign. That's the one driving from Burwick Road up Twombly Road, turning right onto Shaw Street. This stop sign has not been here before. Why is it here now, since there is going to be a crosswalk yet again, especially since there's no signs posted by this intersection? And again, signs posted farther down Twombly Road for other crosswalks. And again, it's mounted higher compared to stop signs on older streets, and the stop sign, it is visible once one is present or presently aware of it. And then this is what we like to call the stop sign that's a yield sign, driving on Shaw Street to Twombly Road. Turning right, the stop sign is treated as a yield a vast majority of the time. Turning left, the stop sign is stopped at when the driver turns left. Let me explain. The stop sign has always been here, the stop sign is not enforced, yet blinkers at the stop sign are always backwards. Don't ask me why, but it's a thing. Before you think I'm really the female town craz-crazy, no, seriously, why are we so concerned? the female town crazed crazy. No, seriously, why are we so concerned? Let me tell you, we have senior apartments with a lot of pedestrian traffic, a dozen school-aged children, three neighbors who operate a motorized wheelchair around this particular intersection, and without violating HIPAA, I have a neighbor who is non-vocal and handicapped. In a sidewalk to driveway to sidewalk transitions, now that the weather is cooling off, the Twombly Road and Shaw Street sloped sidewalks, let me tell you, I quit drinking, I use a cane, walking from Main Street to Twombly, man, I wouldn't want to do that drunk with a cane. Definitely wouldn't. That stuff is sloped. Now add ice, I'm not doing it. Mm-mm. So anyway, any abled bodies, it's definitely a nightmare, only to be enhanced once it puddles on the right of ways due to lack of construction. Completion will soon have soon have an ice rink. I can't wait to ice rink at the bottom of my driveway. However, ninety percent of my homeowners neighbors have been here greater than ten to thirty years, and they're all complaining about these stop signs. So either I think the two that are on Twombly either gotta go, or we need to make them more like, hey, we're here, maybe you should enforce it. Because you were just talking about safety on the streets, those two stop signs. I watch near misses all day long. I'm a retired veteran. I have nothing to do but sip coffee and watch people drive by, honestly. So I just really thought it was important to share that feedback, because when I talk to the police, they don't care. Patrol, they don't have time. So you can get me out there. I'll chase people with rakes and whatever and tell them to stop, but they still think I'm crazy. I mean, I know the mayor's seen it. So anyway, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Can you explain one thing? Because I didn't realize that the stop signs there are really high, and that's a new, that's a change, right, for codes?
No.
No, it's not.
The way it's always been, we've just never.
I've never seen a stop sign that high.
Yep. Yeah, you need to have seven-foot clearance underneath a sign that's adjacent to a walking path.
But those are the only ones that are like that in town.
Those are the newest ones in town.
Right. Well, the one at the end of Burwick isn't like that.
Is there a sidewalk right next to it?
There's a stop sign there.
No sidewalk.
A sidewalk, oh, a sidewalk. Oh, so it's different for sidewalks.
If you have somebody walking, potentially walking underneath it, there needs to be seven-foot clearance according to the manual and uniform traffic control devices.
So that's. It's the tallest sidewalk, I mean, sign I've, a stop sign I've ever seen. It just seems to me that it would be, make it harder to see coming down the road.
It's easier to see if there's a parked truck in front of it.
It's like it's made for, it's made for at night. You know how when you drive up, like if I go down Burwick and there's a stop sign, my lights hit and I have a small SUV? You'd have to have a huge truck to be able to hit the light to hit that stop sign. If you're gonna, and so I guess I'm understanding what she's saying. They're new and it'll take people a while, but people do whiz down Twombly.
I guess I always thought the stop sign was going to be at Burwick, not at Shaw. I was actually surprised. I thought it was gonna, because that's the busy intersection. That's the intersection where you do want to kind of slow people down because there's so many people turning this way, turning that way. It's a busy intersection. I'm surprised you put it at Shaw.
That's the way the consultant designed it, and we didn't give it any.
The consultant doesn't seem to know Sanford very well, because.
So I have a suggestion.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, no, real quick. So a quick suggestion, how about we form a traffic committee, right? And and and, you know, bring people together that have experience like in trucking and, you know, in other categories. And I think that'd be an awesome thing.
I don't, but. Well, we could probably talk about those stop signs and evaluate whether they're working or not in that neighborhood. Could we do that?
You know what I can do? The consultants should have put together like a stop sign warrant for the intersection, so.
Stop sign what?
Warrant.
What does that mean?
It means they have justification on why they put a stop sign there.
Oh, so you can find that for us?
Let me ask them for that.
That would be great. And the parking on Twombly. There is no parking up to a certain point, right? There's no parking signs up there?
There's no parking from on Twombly from Main Street to Shaw, but below Shaw, there's there is on-street parking.
Right.
Also, Matt, it was brought up, maybe a different kind of sign. I mean, I know, I mean, I've seen stop signs that light up in the night or whatever, that or more reflective material on it. I don't know if that's possible, but I think that was also one of the suggestions out here, is make it more visible.
I would like to see that justification, though, because that would be great. Anybody else in the audience that would like to? Go ahead, just take, it's eight o'clock. This is your chance.
Good evening, good evening, councilors, City Manager Buck and Matt Hill. Hi. Lee Burnett from Cycle Sanford.
Lawrence Furbish from the Trails Committee.
You might wonder why a bike ped person and a trails person is here at a roads workshop. We're here because our sidewalks and bike lanes and at least some of our trail system is, serves transportation purposes. And we'd like to advocate for that and maybe give it a little higher priority. We have a modest proposal that's been a long time in the works. And that is to take the Mouse and Promenade, which is now fully funded, and extend that north and south to, instead of a one-point-seven-mile, nice amenity around the pond for lunchtime or for jogging, we have a seven-mile bicycle pedestrian route that will serve economic development purposes, will better serve transportation purposes. And I think it's a, it's a, not an expensive project when you're talking about roads, but it has a big bang for the for the city in terms of changing the image of Sanford and just bringing more people into the into the city. One thing before I turn it over to Lawrence, I wanted to, there's a perception out there that people who walk or people who bicycle, that they don't do that for transportation purposes. It's like a choice. They do it for for fitness. But there are people in town who do not own cars. There are kids who walk and bike to school, and they'd only get there because they're walking and biking. And I'll give you one example. When when we built the high school, the consultants had to do a a walking study. How many kids are going to be affected by this new location for the high school? And they determined that there are a hundred kids who live within the walking zone of the high school. That's, I think it's like a mile and a half radius. This hundred kids, that's more kids than are any on any sports team, more kids than are on any extracurricular program. But they're sort of invisible. And we're sort of trying to elevate that really part of our trail system and our sidewalks and our bike lanes really do serve transportation purposes. This proposal, Lawrence is gonna give you the details of it. It's in our 2019 Trails Master Plan. It's it's something we've put together over a long period of time. It's not an expensive project, particularly because the Trails Committee has been building it for ten years. It's it's virtually built. It needs some improvements. Lawrence, your turn.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I just wanted to remind you of the master plan. Trails Committee spent two years on this. We met monthly for an hour outside of our regular meeting. We had a woman named Julie Isbell from the National Park Service. We got her through a grant as a consultant. A lot of work went into this master plan. If you don't have a physical copy, it's on it's on the website under the Trails Committee. The the big part of the of the master plan was connections. We have a lot of trails in Sanford. At the time we did this plan, I think it was twenty-two miles. Now we're close to thirty. But there are gaps between sections of the trail. So our big focus was to get them all connected. The Mouse and Promenade is like a key part of that. That is such great news and such a good thing that it's finally happening.
It came from the Master Trail, Trails Master Plan. That's where it came from.
And, you know, that that was the two most important connectors in the plan. But there are some others, and I'd just like to touch on a couple. One is the Shaw's, what we call the Shaw's Ridge Connector. The rail trail ends on Route two twenty-four, on the hill just below the Shaw's Ridge. It ends on a narrow road that's very dangerous. There's no way to get from the end of that trail up to all those businesses. So we had proposed just putting in a two-way bike path from where the trail ends up to those businesses. The, this summer, I was walking with my dogs on that trail. I met a group of twenty-five bicyclists, a couple of adults and a bunch of teenagers who are bicycling. I'm sure that they didn't get all the way up to the ice cream shop because of that, because of that road. So that would be a small improvement that could make a significant difference. The other one is down on Route Four, the Powers Bridge. I mean, I've talked to Matt. I guess the state is going to be redoing the Powers Bridge. What we would really like to see is a is an underpass under the bridge. The the Mouse, the high school bike trail comes almost all the way to Route Four. We have a little section that we still need to get. And then we want to extend it down Gallow Road and toward the birding paths eventually to link up with the Eastern Trail. So it would be really key so that people walking or bicycling wouldn't have to stop cross that road, which is a very busy road. And again, traffic is pretty fast. We could have that bridge when it's redone, include that that under bike path. And the last one I want to talk about is the so-called Middle School Connector. You talked about how long projects take. I think ten years ago, money was spent to devise a bike path to connect the bike path that comes in from River Street to the one that comes in from Main Street. And that plan was, went through site plan review and it was all approved. Then there were problems with the grant, and it sort of fell apart. And then someone suggested, well, we could, we could use part of the existing road by the middle school. We could just connect the bike path with that. And so that was all set. We thought construction was going to take place with that. And then the school department decided that, well, that wasn't going to be safe to have kids on the road, and there was going to be issues with snow plowing. So now we're going back to revisit the old original plan, which is a bike path separate from the from the roadway. And and just to add to what Lee had to say, it's it's not just throwing money at a bunch of high, you know, hikers and bicyclists. The Eastern Trail, which runs from Kennybunk to South Portland, is a significant trail. It's twenty-four miles. And the Southern Maine Planning Group did a study of the economic impact of the Eastern Trail. And they found that four points, forty-four point six million dollars in benefits annually, three hundred and sixty-four jobs, two hundred and fifty thousand people use that trail annually, and it's going to be expanded. We hope someday to be able to link up with that trail, so our trails will hook up with that. So these are all, I know there's never enough money to go around, but these are all some important things I'd like you to consider. Can I say one other thing? I put, I like my road. I live on Clinton Street.
I was wondering who did that.
Yeah, I like my road. There is one issue with Clinton Street. On the corner, there is a drainage problem where Clinton and Main connect. It's been there forever. When all the work was going on Main Street a few years ago, I actually talked to one of the workmen that was there working, and I said, you know, there's a real drainage problem here. He said, oh, yeah, don't worry, we're going to take care of that. Well, it's it's not taken care of, it's probably worse now than ever. Whenever there's a rain, there's a big, big puddle, and in the winter, when it freezes, it's really awful. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. You have.
Yeah, the 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 usage that Lawrence was talking about on the Eastern Trail, the economic impact, that's what we can expect in Sanford. But we need to improve this seven-mile piece to universal access standards in order to get that kind of use. These are the most popular trails, more popular than walking trails, more popular than snowmobile or ATV or multipurpose, universal access trails. That's what we need to improve this stretch towards. And then we'll get that kind of a of a benefit. Lawrence described some of these projects, ten years. These are the kind of things that we need help with. They're a little bit more than the Trails Committee or Cycle Sanford can. We have gates, locked gates on our trail system that have no pass-throughs. We have right-of-way issues that are just beyond us in order to resolve. That's, that's why we we need this help. We need the city's support on these things. We're going to continue to do all the things that we've done, but we just sort of need the city behind us a little bit more. And the last thing I wanted to say is that the city has, I mean, we've shown with with broadband, with solar, with the Village Partnership, I mean, we've shown that we can lead the way. And Sanford is really lucky to have, we're a linear town, north-south. We can do this. We can lead just like we have on everything else. And when we do, we're not going to have to rely on Jordan to do all the PR for the city. We're going to have people all around doing PR for us, because this is going to be a great, this will be a great thing for the city. So I hope, as we say, it's modest. Money towards this is peanuts compared to a big road project. So I hope you can find room in the budget for it.
Thank you. Thanks, Guy. Did you have something else that you?
Yeah, I definitely, you guys have been tireless advocates for the trails and really appreciate the visionary work that you do. It's been part of a lot of what I presented tonight. You guys have been instrumental on lending a hand on, so I want to thank you. You know, each of those locations that you talked about, Shaw's Ridge, Route Four Powers Bridge, and the the Middle School Connector, like you said, Lawrence, it's just each of them, you could spend several meetings on just trying to try to riddle out exactly what needs to happen. And then you have to have landowner permission and DOT coordination and analysis on. So, you know, all of that, I mean, we could have a series of public meetings on on just one of those, just trying to figure out what we're going to do, you know? Shaw's Ridge Connector, I mean, that's a hairpin turn with a sight distance impediment. It's a building, you know, and cars are going very fast there. Route Four Powers Bridge Underpass, the feedback I got from Main DOT, when you asked me, and you and Lee had asked me to kind of chase that down, was that, you know, there's not currently like a destination. The birding ponds are technically a destination, but I guess the Sewerage District needs to really kind of figure that out with you guys and before it's official. They have, you know, concerns about people being back there and, you know, you know, just general security stuff. And then Middle School Connector, yeah, I mean, I took part in a lot of that. And, yeah, it really came down to, like you said, the superintendent was like, not sure we can do this, because just the way that.
So you don't think.
Middle school parents drive.
So you don't think getting to the Eastern Trail is enough of a destination for the underpass on Route Four?
No, it was the, the immediate destination was the birding ponds. That was, that was the concern. And I, I would encourage you to like to sit down with.
I'll just see, just to give you a little, I go to Dover to bike with my sister as well, and there's this, you go along the river, and there's this great section where you take a right, it's down like this, and then you're under the road, and you're back up again. It's a little bit like hairpinny, but it works, and it gets you from point A to point B under a fairly busy road.
We tried to have some discussions with the Sewer District about the birding ponds and getting access. And they have a big issue about security, which which I understand. We, I guess there were a couple of commissioners who were just sort of against even even going that route. But to spend some changes, we have a proposal to try to move the fence. If we moved the fence like ten feet in, you could have a, you know, the trail could go right along the outside of the fence and go all the way down and then keep going. So we've even talked about, well, maybe if we offered to pay for moving the fence, but, you know, our budget is not exactly big. But it's something that we're still working on. So what you're saying is, if we really got the birding pond as a legitimate okayed destination, then that might make it easier to get approval for the bridge. destination, then that might make it easier to get approval for the bridge project?
Uh, no, what I'm saying is that it sounds like DOT is, when they do the bridge, they're gonna do the bridge. If, if we're gonna have an underpass, it's gonna be municipally-led and funded, that's, that's what I, they said to me.
Okay.
And that doesn't.
It doesn't mean that it's not gonna happen.
Doesn't mean it's not happening, it just means we gotta, we gotta drive the conversation, we gotta pull ourselves up by our own bootstraps. And I think, I think you guys are on the right track with the Trails Master Plan, is, is keep, you know, follow the, what is it, plan the work and work the plan, is that, is that what they say? So, you know, keep the, keep the Trails Master Plan like updated and kind of use it as a guideline and a roadmap.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay, one more, because we're getting to the end point.
I think the, this underpass on, on Route 4 could also serve kids coming from Jagger Mill to the, to the high school, I mean, if, if that, if Jagger Mill gets more housing development in the, in that area and the city needs to put in some kind of a sidewalk or bike path along Jagger Mill, this could, this could serve that as well as any potential destination at the, at the birding ponds. One thing we forgot to say is we'd like to invite councilors, city staff to either bike or e-bike this route so you can see some of the obstacles, but literally, we, we have, we have gates, locked gates along this route. We have right-of-way issues, we have, it would be nice if people could visualize what we're trying to describe.
Some of the, the school has gates that don't have pathways through, correct? That's, that's a big one, yep. They didn't, they didn't put a little path through, I mean.
You mean like at the high school?
Yeah, because I, I found it hard getting around their gate, there was, there wasn't a wide enough section on the side to really do a nice kind of get-around for a walker or a bicyclist. And I understand what they're trying to do, but you should be able to walk in or bike along there, it is a city asset, so.
Thank you. Yes, that was, that's on that.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I just wanted to say that for the 11 years here, I've found the, the Trails Committee to be very tenacious.
They are. You didn't bring hazen tonight, though.
It's too late for hazen.
Uh, anybody else in the audience? I see everybody's pretty much, unless, nope, you're all set. Councilors have anything that they, had any questions to ask?
Yeah, quick, one last question, Matt. So, do we have a liaison from the city that works directly with DOT, so when they're doing projects here within the city limits, that's you? So, okay, so now a follow-up question real fast, two seconds. So with the 109 project, right, and all its, you know, stops and, and everything there, is there anything that you could share with us as to why there was such a delay over the summer? Because now we're getting into late fall and it's like rush, rush, rush.
Very similar to other contractors, even the big ones, it's, it's materials, it's equipment, it's, it's help. I mean, with, even with our very big contractors that we have working in the city, they're just struggling for help all the time. We end up having locally contractors' crews who are very green, and it was frustrating to kind of have, to bring in this big contractor and kind of pay for their education at the same time, so those companies are not immune to that. Paving is a weary job and night paving is even wearier, you don't know when to eat breakfast and you don't know if you should be eating steak for your Cheerios.
Um, did you have something you wanted to add, or, no, anybody else? Okay, well, I have one question just to bring it back to roads. Do you know how many miles of road we have in Sanford?
184, including the gravel roads.
Told you we do now.
See, I, she said you would know, it just seems like there's a whole, I mean, when I'm driving around, like, so when I went down to the gentleman from, what was it, the one who left that's down off of Burnier Road?
Tall Pines.
Hot Tall Pines Road. I never had ever been down that road. I mean, I just didn't even know, I mean, it's so, and you discover these roads and it just makes me realize, like, we'll never finish all the roads that need to be done. I mean, it's like you're, you could never, we don't have a long enough season or enough, I mean, it's not just having enough money, because if we all of a sudden had enough money, we still couldn't do it in the season that we have.
Well, the, the difficulty post-COVID is, you know, the city made the huge injection of cash and made the investment, and now coming out of post-COVID, you know, construction costs have gone through the roof, nobody but nobody has labor, right? So sometimes it's not the escalation cost of the materials, it's the cost of getting labor, which is taking labor away from our own department, because, you know, the, the large contractors can mark up their product, they can get it out of whomever is paying for that. Our markup is property taxes and that doesn't go well, so.
Well, I'm hoping that things will, you know, cool off a little bit and we'll be able to get, I'm, I'm grateful that we're able to have done as much as we have done. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Thank you, I just remembered, I had, I did have a question. So, one thing that I've been asked for is sort of a map of what roads have been worked on this year. I think that that may be in, in the works, but is that something that would be available along with that presentation?
Yes, so I believe.
That was that PDF, wasn't it, the one that you?
Uh, no, I think we updated the city's website.
Oh, you did?
On the GIS, uh, let's see if I can find that. It might be under a protected layer, that might be why you don't see it. And of course, the website is new, so I'm struggling to find the GIS, Sanford, GIS.
Is there anybody on Zoom that wanted to speak? I, I didn't ask you. Okay, great. We're almost done anyway, so, Matt, you can just, you could show us that one piece, some, so something that we could look at ourselves.
Yeah, maybe, maybe when the, that, that presentation gets sent out, we could just get a copy or a link to that, that would be fine.
He's gonna show you, it might be a layer that you have to act.
Because a lot of it was like written in the spreadsheet, the work that had been done.
Right.
So that would work too, right?
Yeah, it looked like a lot of that work was future work.
No, they did mid-years too, because most side villages this year, that was on the first spreadsheet he showed.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be good to see if we could.
That first.
Oh, yeah, he's gonna send us, I, I thought he said he was gonna send us that and it'd be available on the website as well.
So Larissa's pulling up, we had Sanford GIS loaded with historical CIP as well as upcoming CIP, so.
Oh, great.
Color-coded and.
Well, that'll help.
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
So you've got, I can't see it on my screen.
Trouble is, it's in administrative layers, we do, we have to release that out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's got 2016 through 2027, and again, it's just a snapshot on.
Oh, okay.
What the plan was at the time when we did the layer, but they were able to put everything together, so you can go in there on the admin, if we choose to make that public, so be it, but you can go in by year and turn years off and years on just to get an idea of like what's coming up.
Unless there are concerns about it being public, I think it'd be great to have access to that.
Agreed.
I do, too.
Because people can't make changes to it, so it would be nice for them to visualize it.
Just a big asterisk that, you know, this is dependent on construction and market conditions.
And, and, once again, when is that meeting, the one that's the public meeting? It's November 17th?
November 17th, the open house is from 3:00 to 5:00 PM and then the public.
Here.
Here.
In the chambers.
In the chambers.
The, the public hearing is 6:00 to 8:30.
So, 3:00 to 5:00 and then 6:00 to 8:30?
Yes, yep.
So you understood, because you're, you're as part of the Raze Grant with the Cottage Street, so November 17th with the Main DOT, that will be a good time to talk about all the concerns that you have and how their plan is going to help alleviate it. That would be a great time to, I'll be here as well, so, and tell the neighborhood and I hope the Main Street businesses participate as well, because that'll be part of it as well.
But that will be on, it, will it be Zoomed and we'll use, just the way we have regular meetings, anytime we have a meeting here in City Hall.
That's correct, Main DOT kind of did a double take when we offered to provide that and they said, are you sure you can do that? And I said, oh, yes, I'm sure.
Absolutely, well, I think that that's exact, and so it will be recorded as well so that we can go back, it'll be archived and we can look at that at any time.
Yep.
Great, anybody else have anything to say? If, oh, go ahead, Steve.
So, so I hope that.
By the way, happy birthday.
But I'm not counting this one, so, okay.
Please, don't complain.
Yeah, I'm not complaining at all. So I, I, I hope the takeaway is tonight, so the dots that I put on the, the page here is that the city has an engineered roadway plan, there was a lot of work that went into that, this, it's not by happenstance that certain roads get done at a certain period of time, it is under an engineered plan. I wanted to compliment the council, because that started back many years ago, but especially in 2018, the large discussion that led to the 2019 referendum that the people supported here in Sanford to fund that plan, right? As best as we could engineer that and, and understand the economics at that time to fund the plan, and the council has continued to, to do so, they've been very unwavering in that. We're redoing and updating that plan in 2023, so we'll get new numbers, new assessment, see what we have done and done well and see where we need to move from there. I think the city, I, no, I know the city has been exceptionally successful in attracting leveraged funding through the Main Department of Transportation as well as the used Department of Transportation to lower the property tax burden in making these significant investments in our streets and roads. And lastly, the Department of Public Works has been refocused from doing, being anything and everything to everybody, to really now being the preventative maintenance side of the equation, and we contract out for the rehabilitation and the reconstruction so that we can put our department on those type of jobs that has the greatest impact as far as maintaining the investments that the city and the people have allowed us to make here. So I think those are the, really the key elements here, and if the public can take that away with a better understanding of why we do what we do and, and how it's funded, I'd be very appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, I will declare a.